Okay, alright, I mean you're recorded. Uh, welcome to the Mount Anthony Union High School District number fourteen Board of Directors meeting. This is special meeting, it's labeled that way because even though you're meeting on your regularly scheduled time. Uh, day rather, the time has been altered, so labeled it a special meeting. Uh, first agenda item is reorganization of the board. So, uh, at this time. Uh, I asked for nominations for the chair, you unmute your mic and make your nomination, then mute it back, so. Nominations are in order for the Chair of the Mount Anthony Union School District Board of Directors, are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate President Slate. For all of those positions, I thought they've done a nice job.
So that would be, uh, Tim Holbrook is the Chair. And who's the Vice Chair is Leon?
Leon.
And the clerk is, who's the clerk?
Ron.
Ron.
I believe are the SDSU with Ed Letourneau being backup.
That's right.
Is there a second to that nomination? Okay, so I'm gonna need to s- show hands, oh, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nomination, I'll ask for votes, so all in favor is the slate, uh, of, uh. For the Board of Directors as made in the motion, raise your hand, so, and keep it up so I can count. One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then I'm gonna ask. Ron, cause and Fran, since I can't see your hands, would you unmute and tell me?
Yes.
Yes, from Ron, Fran?
Yes.
So Richard, that would be ten yes. So, and that's all the members here, so there's no need for me to ask if there's any opposed. So, um. The newly appointed Chair will now take over the meeting, there's no need to go to the next agenda items, cause you did a slate, so your Vice Chair. Is done, your clerk is done, and your representatives to, so, to the, to the SU. Uh, Board is done, who are the three again on the SU, could we say?
It was, it was Leon, Fran, and alternative would be Ed Letourneau.
No, there's no more alternative. Three.
With Ron Higgins.
Ron Higgins, yeah.
Ron Higgins?
So let, Ron Higgins is the clerk, right? So let's.
And I'm also on the, um, uh, Supervisory Board.
Yes, he is, cause you have three seats on the Supervisory Board.
Right.
There's no more alternatives, so it's Fran and Ron.
And Leon.
No, and Leon, Fran, Leon, Ron are your representatives. And, uh, the clerk is also Ron, and Leon is the Vice. Chair, Richard, do you have all of that? I'm assuming he does.
Yes, I do, I just unmuted, okay, yeah, I've got it.
Thank you, Richard, the meeting is yours, Tim.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim, welcome everybody, and thank you. Uh, for the vote of confidence, and I certainly, and I know what all of us, uh, in those positions, uh, will do our very best. For those of you that don't know, Jackie Kelly, she is a new Board member. Uh, Jackie, would you just like to say hi, so people recognize you? Whoops. Hello? Hello? Do we have your picture?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I, I apologize, I'm not very good with those sort of things, so I, if I screw up, let me know. If there are no other, uh, comments, I'd like to move on to public comments. Uh, Jim, did you say earlier that we had somebody?
Yeah, you have one member from the public, and she has her hand raised. So she would, uh, let, let her go now she could state her name, and then her comment. Jen?
Go ahead. Do we have her name, Jim?
It's Jen, B U T T L E, but I'm, uh, it says she's unmuted, can, Jen, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, so.
So, I just wanted to, um. I guess, share my opinion about graduation, my daughter Elizabeth Fuddle is a senior this year, she's. Um, active and interact and honor society, being, holding. Either president or vice president positions in three different clubs, and. The one thing she has voiced about. Really getting the end of her senior year cut rather short abruptly by all this, um, pandemic stuff. Is that she would really like to see her friends at the school one last time, because they didn't ever get the chance to say goodbye. And I think that there's a lot of. Possibilities about spacing people out. Having restricted access, so parents don't need to be at the high school when the kids are graduating. But I really hope that. You guys encourage the school to have a graduation ceremony. Limit the access and figure out how to logistically make it happen, I have lots of ideas and I'm willing to help. But, um, I just wanted to put that out there, I hope that they can have an actual graduation ceremony.
Thank you very much, we will be addressing that, I'd spoke with Jim earlier, and, um. If I remember correctly, uh, Jim, you said that Steve was going to address that issue, is that?
Yeah, I'm, we're both gonna address that, yeah, I'll address a little more, and then Steve will give more of the details.
Uh, you'll, uh, if you wanna stick with this, if you can stick with this, you'll hear both from the Superintendent and from the Principal. It is on our agenda to discuss.
You have, you have two other people joining the meeting right now, I don't know if they're public, so, um. Hold on, one's a phone number. So I don't have a name, is there an Adam? Adam?
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me.
Uh, are you here for public comments, Adam?
Uh, I, no, I'm here covering for the Bennington Banner, sir.
Okay, alright, so I'm gonna, um, mute your mic, Adam, or ask you to mute it, so that we. I can do it for you. Oh, that's Tim, hold on. Thank you, Adam, for doing that, and a phone number just joined the meeting, is that a member of the public? Hello? Is there anyone else there that would like to make? A comment?
If, if there are other comments, and the person with the phone number chooses to, uh, call in. We'll try to, uh, we'll, we'll try to respond. If not, I think we can move on then. We'll move on to finance, uh, I'll just follow the agenda, Treasurers' Report. We need to accept the Treasurers' Report, I'd like a motion.
Now move it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Would you, uh, Jim, or can, I can't tell who made the motion or seconded it, can, can you tell us who that is?
It was Ron that did.
Was Ron, did Ron make that motion?
No, Fran, I.
So Fran made the motion and Ron seconded it.
Is there any, any discussion?
And, and that's for all four Treasurers' Reports, is that right?
Right, that's January, February, March, and April, they're enclosed in the packet. All, all in favor signify, uh, I guess by raising your hand, saying aye?
Aye.
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 Abstain or, uh, uh, no? Nobody, you can move on then, budget status is just for your information. Procedure for executing contracts.
I have that.
Is, is that?
I have that, Tim. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a motion that you make every year.
Right.
And the motion reads, to authorize the Superintendent or his or her designee. To execute on behalf of the school district, purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, grant agreements. And other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the school district. The Superintendent or designee shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process. Any employment agreements, any long-term contracts without express authority from the Board. So it's a yearly housekeeping one, item that we do every time we reorganize.
Right, and Jim, as part of that, with the Board is still responsible for signing the warrants, right?
Right, this is not, a warrant is not a contract, this is contracts, yes, so the Board still does their warrant.
O- okay. All those in fa- uh, a- any? Okay, did we get both those names?
Yes.
Jim, did you get both those names?
I think Richard has them, Richard. So maybe what, as we make more motions, maybe people should state their name if people are having trouble seeing that, but.
Well, why don't we try that again, I'll accept a motion on, on the proposal procedure for executing contracts. Very good, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes, Leon, seconding.
Thank you, Leon, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify or raise your hand by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? We can move on.
Can I just make a, Richard, do you have this language, it, it's the same from every other Board I know? Were you able to get what I said, or do you already have it?
Uh, yeah, Jim, I've got it, thank you, okay.
Jim, at the, at the present time, I'd like to be sure we also authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair to sign warrants. That need to be signed, um, I've forgotten exactly the, the wording that we have, we've done that for the last few years. Is, is Renee there, can she give us the wo- the wording?
Yeah, we are gonna be using something called DocuSign two, which, you know, Renee could talk to you about, that allows you to electronically sign things. Which is, uh, a, a different step, so Renee did join the meeting, if she unmutes her, uh, mic, she'll be able to tell you.
Yes, sir, we just wanna authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to sign warrants or authorize warrants on behalf of the Board. Um, if they occur on an off cycle, or at a time when the Board is not actually going to meet.
Very good, Richard, did you get that?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for that.
So move.
No.
Second. Ron, second.
Okay, so Leon and Ron, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. All, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Very good, we can move on then, consent agenda, Fran?
Fran, I'll, I'll move it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Ron, I'll second.
Very good, any discussion on the consent agenda? If not? All, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? There are none, it passes, we can go down to policies. Leon, if you wouldn't mind, why don't you go through these with us? Leon, are you there?
He's got me on mute, you, you got me on mute?
Yeah, uh, no, you're unmuted, Leon, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, the, uh, first policy on that is. Five thousand, uh, fifty discipline of, of, uh, pupils and suspension and expulsion of, of stu- of pupils. And this is up for adoption. Uh, we've gone through the warrant period and so forth, and had, uh, no additional changes. And these, uh, this, well, I'll say this as a comment where all three of these policies were reviewed by our legal group as well. For the language and so forth. So I would recommend that we adopt, uh, policy fifty-five, I mean fifty-fifty.
Okay, I'll accept the, accept the motion for that.
I'll move it, Fran.
Have a second?
Ron, second.
Very good, any discussion? All those in favor signify by, by raising your hand? Opposed or abstentions? Could Leon go on to fifty-sixty-five?
Fifty-sixty-five, verbal physical assault of an employee, uh. In terms of, uh, the things that we've made changes out here for that, and again, uh. This is, it gone through the warning period, and we've had it go back out and be looked at by legal. And so forth, and there's no addition to this policy, and I would like to ask that we adopt this policy.
Very good, I'll ask for a motion again.
So moved, Fran.
Thank you, have a second?
Second, Ron.
Thank you, Ron, all, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify raising, by raising your hand? Opposed or abstentions? Thank you, we'll go on to fifty-four hundred, uh, uh, Leon?
Yes, policy fifty-four hundred, student safety, uh, is out for. Went through a warning and adopting process, and again, we looked at this with legal, uh, on all of these policies, so, uh. I ask that the Board adopt this policy, uh, fifty-four hundred, the student.
Now move it, Fran.
Very good, thank you, a second?
I'll second, Ron.
Did I have my, do well, that's great. Any others, any, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Opposed or abstentions? Very good, so those three policies, uh, have been adopted by the MAU Board. The next, um, item on the agenda, and we changed the order a little bit. Um, generally speaking, the Superintendent's Report would come at the end of the agenda. But because of these unusual times, and because of the effort that, that Jim and, and others ha- ha- have put into these things. I think just for clarity's sake, it makes sense to move his, um, his comments, his report. Uh, to this portion of the agenda, so Jim, if you don't mind?
First, uh, order, uh, a business for my, me and my reporter, asking the Board to. Uh, make a motion to reduce the number of student days to the state minimum, which is a hundred and seventy-five student days. We go a hundred and eighty here, I asked the Union Elementary Board to do the same thing, so. By going to one-seventy-five, that will end school by June twelfth. Uh, the, um, basically, we won't be making up the, uh, the five snow days that we used. And I, I think that by June twelfth, our staff and our students, um, will have had enough of remote learning, so. Uh, I asked for a motion to, to go a hundred and seventy-five days ending school for students on June twelfth.
Would this be for one? What, when, would this be for one year, Jim, or, or?
Just for this year, not, yeah, not.
Okay, okay, so it would just be, it would just be for the academic year two thousand two, uh, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, you're correct?
Correct.
Do you have a motion?
Fran moved it, you need a second.
Second it from Leon.
Leon, thank you, is there any discussion on this?
Uh, question ten.
Yes, okay.
Question for the Superintendent, how would this affect, uh, staff, uh, staff days?
So they, they're still required to work those days, but we're, we're going, you know, I, I understand how spent they are, but. How many of those days we will require them to report as opposed, and report would be virtual. Um, to plan, uh, for the, for the beginning of next year, how much time we need depending on what, uh. What the, you know, what's going to happen to the start of the year, so. We'll ask that they be available, but my intent would be to release them as soon as possible.
Are there any other questions or concerns that anybody would like to express? If not, uh, we have a motion, uh, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Saying aye?
I, I.
I.
Opposed or abstentions, none, okay, Jim, next?
Thank you, thank you for that, um, I think, you know, I wish I could, I could end it even a little earlier, but I don't think. That's gonna come from, from the state, um. So, I do wanna, it's been a while since we met. And you've gotten my emails, you know, with some updates, but I do wanna take, uh, the opportunity to, to thank, um. Do Four Bus Company and the Aggie Group for their efforts to distribute meals to our students daily. Cl- uh, break, you know, breakfast, lunch, and on Friday, they even send home, um. Uh, weekend meals, uh, the count's been fluctuating, but, uh, there was a little bit of a drop, but, you know. Uh, it's still, you know, well over three thousand meals, um, daily going out, which is a tremendous effort. I've, uh, visited a few times, and one day I did run, ride the bus as part of the team that distributed, and then. Open that up for staff members to have that opportunity, that everyone should at least go once, uh, to ride the bus. Cause there are a few buses that serve, uh. Have a higher volume, so they need extra people, so some of our principals and, um. Staff members have also volunteered to do that, and, uh, it, it is a heartwarming experience when you're seeing everybody. Uh, coming at their meals, there's, there's some real need out there, so I wanna thank them for continuing their efforts, including during April's school vacation. Um, the, it is gonna come to the distribution part of it's gonna come to an end with the end of school, cause our bus contract ends. We, we don't have the, the means to continue that, but the food, the summer food program, you know, will continue. Someone to have have done in the past, but like a pickup points and distribution points, so. Um, I did see that, uh, we were waiting for, um, the federal USDA to. Um, continue the, um, requi- the change from requirements on how food has to be distributed. In the, our typical summer program, there has to be a spot where people can congregate and sit and eat in a shaded covered area. Uh, the food that's distributed isn't just take and go, but during this pandemic, they have altered that requirement. And, uh, I believe just last Friday, they extended that requirement to go through the summer, which. You know, is, is going to help, because the, it's the whole gathering part, and then cleaning and disinfecting that, that area that. Becomes a challenge for us. Um, and I do also wanna, uh, thank, um. Our administrators for, um, their work, and I'm gonna get into some of the projects that I have them working on. Uh, no one expected to this, no one ever trains for anything like this, though in our policy manual, I, I mean, our, in our, um, emergency. Manual, there is a, uh, half a page on pandemic, uh, which we went to, which wasn't all, uh, that helpful. But it, it was addressed in our emergency management plan. Um, so, we're learning as we're going, and I, I've, I've said this to others, and I'll, I'll repeat it. If you were going to design remote learning, cause you said, well, you wanted a remote learning, you, the Board instructed us to do it, and I'd say, well, alright, give us. Here's our, here's our three-year plan to get it up and running, and basically, it had to happen in three weeks or less. The amount of Chromebooks that were distributed, um, by our tech department, uh, I believe it's like over fourteen hundred. Uh, the, the nurses who assisted in that to make sure that, um. That proper health precautions were followed in that distribution, uh, you know, I, I just. I continue to be amazed by the people who have stepped up and, uh, been all-stars during this, and, and I thank them, and you probably start thanking people. You leave people out. So, really, I, it, the, the teachers, uh. Working remotely is, is a grind, it's difficult, it's tough to connect with students, it's tough to make sure that you're connecting with everyone. And I just wanna thank them for their efforts to make sure that the continuity of learning, uh, is continuing for as many students as possible. That really, you know, I, I think. You know, when we started to reflect on this, we knew that we weren't gonna be able to reach everyone consistently. But the goal is to try and connect with everyone and, and, um, make that, that school, um, connection. Our clinicians are still working and connecting with students, uh, you know, no one's, no one's giving up, and, uh. You, you would be proud of your teachers. I also wanna thank the Teachers Association for agreeing to extend the deadline for sending out RIF notices. The contract has a deadline of, um, um, May fifteenth, I initially asked if they would extend to. Uh, June fifteenth, they declined, I came back with a counter offer saying, you know, can we split the difference and go with June first? And, uh, they did, and I, it's a balance, because if anyone may lose their job. They want them to know as soon as possible so that they can try and find employment, and, um. I would prefer to wait as long as possible to see if we have a, a better picture of. Uh, is there more federal funding coming, uh, is there, you know, other scenarios that may, um. Help with the impact the Ed Fund, um, is seeing from this pandemic, so we have June first, and, um. So what else are we doing, cause that is, that is our last. Our last battle cry, whatever term it is, I, I, I do not wanna send out RIF notices, alright? And, you know, and I know just by me saying this at this meeting, anyone watching is gonna raise the anxiety level that like. You know, my god, am I gonna get, am I gonna get a, a RIF notice, reduction in force notice, so, um. But I have to have that conversation, so there's no way that I can, um, reduce that anxiety and say that, uh. We're gonna be very careful how we do this, so first, we're looking at, at district, uh, SU wide, so not just MAU. There's twenty open positions, so we're not, at this time, filling any of those positions. That's close to like a million dollars in savings, but, um, uh, we, um. Some of those positions probably will have to be filled, I acknowledge that, but at this time, we're not, cause. They may be filled by people doing internal transfers and ultimately, um, saving somebody's position that way. So, capital projects are also on hold, I mean, the first thing I did when this pandemic started, before we even. Went to remote learning, I froze spending, um, to, anything, it had to be an emergency or safety-related. That, uh, so, our goal is to try and save as much money out of this budget, so it'll roll over. Uh, because what we're hearing is, okay, fiscal year twenty-one looks pretty bleak, but fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Is gonna be even bleaker because, uh, you know, any rainy day fund or anything like that is gonna get expended this year, so. Uh, it may be even a bigger hole, and, and maybe the, you know, the fecal stimulus won't be there in FY twenty-two, so that could be. Even more impactful, so, trying to spend as much, spend as little as possible right now. So it'll roll into next year, which then would be used to reduce, uh, impact on tax rate for FY twenty-two, so. Uh, and I, and I do think that there will be some healthy fund balances towards, we're, we're freezing some things, but we're also spending more money on. You know, obviously, you know, personal protection devices, if we can get them, are much more expensive than what they previously were. And, uh, technology costs have gone up, you know, is everything from getting hotspots to replacing Chromebooks, um. And, and repair of Chromebooks, and buying DocuSigns, so we can remotely sign documents, uh, that, those are all. Those are all unanticipated costs. So, capital projects are on hold, like you had a section of a roof slated to be repaired, it's currently not leaking, it would be good maintenance practice. To keep that replacement schedule intact and go ahead and replace it, I'm not gonna authorize that to happen. Uh, at this time, again, uh, capital project will be limited to anything that is an emergency or safety-related that it has to be done. Uh, every, every dollar we, we don't spend next year on projects like that. Um, you know, results in us keeping more staff. Prince, any, any questions before I continue?
Jim, are you gonna go over your estimate of the, uh, amount of, do you have any way of anticipating? When we know how much state aid we're gonna get?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna get to that, Principals and Central Office administrators have been tasked to prepare. Three tiers of levels of, for possi- or levels for possible reduction. The first tier is basically what I just said to you, you know, like. Cut out what you can cut out without impacting any employment, like, uh, an open position, don't fill it. Uh, we were going to put new company in the library, don't do it, so that would be like tier one, and, uh, so we, we're gonna start looking at that tomorrow. The principals have to have that submitted to me, some have already have, I have to submit it to me by nine-thirty tomorrow morning, so then we, we can start. Uh, adding that up and see where we are at, um, a level of, um, spending. The challenge, of course, you know, and this goes to Tim's question, the challenge goes at this time, we don't know the full impact. Uh, that this pandemic will have on the Ed Fund, we know that it has a, a severe deficit. And whatever, um, we get from CARES Fund from the federal government, is not gonna completely, um, fill that hole. So last week, we started hearing, um, a new phrase. So last week, we started hearing um, a new phrase from both the governor and the Secretary of Education. Uh, they both said, um, one said it on Thursday and one said it on Friday of last week, that. One way to plug the losses in the Ed Fund is to reduce spending. They also talked about opening up teacher contracts for renegotiation. As you know, we don't have a settled contract, we are still in negotiations. Um, so reduce spending. Uh, you know, they, where before they had talked about other options, maybe there's another way for federal funding. Uh, maybe there could be some long-term borrowing to spread the. The, the impact over five or ten years as opposed to, you know, one or two years. So. Uh, I don't know where those ideas have gone, but as it is at the silver center, we do spending, even though. We all probably, you know, it's the worst kept secret, and we all knew that it, it has to come. So what, I mean, we are preparing for up to a twenty percent reduction um, in um. In the, in what we receive from the Ed Fund. Uh, I. I hope and do not think that it will go that high, but I feel that I, I need to plan to that level um. And then we'll try and make our best uh, educated, um, guests. So. The um. And, and if that is the case, we will have to call special meetings of the M A U Board and the. New Elementary Board and the administrators will um, present um. Reduction plans to uh, board members, cause ultimately um. It's, it's going to be your decision, cause as, you know, the reduction of force section of the teacher's contract. Says it is solely the responsibility of each board to determine the number of teaching positions to meet the board's education requirements, so. Um, I don't have the authority to uh, issue reduction of force notices, I can just advise the board and then you will have to make the decision. Um, you know, are you comfortable with just doing the reduction and, and, and I don't have the numbers to give to you right now? Are you comfortable with just doing the reductions of not filling open positions, not doing capital projects, and then we will have a number and say like, okay, that's what saves you next year? Uh, the other thing that is, that, and, and if you're fine with that, and you don't wanna go further. Then we're really rolling the dice at this point because of the um. Uncertain picture from the Ed Fund, and I'm not faulting the state, and they don't know, I'm not faulting the H U Education. I don't think anybody, and we have two representatives right here on the board, I'm, I'm sure no one, no one has a crystal ball and knows what it's. Gonna finally bottom out at. Um, so that, that may be required next week. Um, we, we, I, I meet again with the Teachers Association Friday afternoon and uh. You know, this has been the discussion for our past few meetings. So, uh, I do feel that we're working in partnership with them, but um. Need to come to grips with maybe some difficult news. Um. So that, that would be, that would be next week. Um, but the principals then. So that, that's how we're wrapping up this year, and that's financial planning, but the other challenge that we have is. What is the opening of school going to look like in September? So, um. For the M A U, I formed a committee with the, with the elementary agency, with the M A U. Two administrators from middle school, two administrators from the high school. Special ed administrators and central office administrators. Uh, uh, tasked with developing plans for the reopening of school looks like. Everything from continued remote learning, which is a possibility. Or some type of, or a full reopen, which I really don't think is gonna be a possibility, but even if we did fully reopen. The challenge is going to be personal protection equipment, sanitation, cleaning, purchasing those type of things. We're asking the, the state for guidance, uh, for, to take the lead on. Cause what I, I feel that's happening right now, particularly when we buy personal protection equipment, we're competing against other school districts with the same vendor. And uh, I, I really think that, and, and we've expressed this to Dan French with the Agency of Education and. Uh, so I know he's working on, but one of the things the superintendent's proposed is. There needs to be a statewide coordination for school to reopen, there needs to be a statewide coordination, similar to how it is for. Uh, supplies for hospitals and for essential workers. If you're opening school. Then those teachers are essential workers and the students who are entering that school and the teachers who are working there. Uh, need to be protected, so we're gonna need a lot of assistance in, in, in getting that, as if you've. You know, from your own personal experience, trying to buy masks or sanitation equipment, like cleaning supplies. Is difficult. So they're, they're looking at reopening plans, um, yeah, there's, there's been all kinds of. You know, rumors out there that, you know, we're only going every other day, we're only going A M P M, we're. Uh, the Australian model that you go to school for five days and you stay home for. Uh, two weeks so that you're basically self-quarantine for fourteen days. None of that and all of that has been discussed, right? There's, there's no truth there. Nothing's been decided, cause we don't know. Are we creating contingency plans for what we think are likely scenarios? Yes, so. I'll have, as those get developed, I'll have um, more information for the boards. Um, this week I did reopen our fields, so uh, you know, our fields and track have been closed because of all the social distancing requirements. So those are reopened to the public to get out there and use them. Uh, the signs, most of the signs were taken down today. But playgrounds are still closed, that's not really an M A U thing as much as my elementary schools. It's because of the hard surfaces that are on those playgrounds, and unless we send cleaning crews out. To disinfect slides and swings and climbing bars, um, at this time, we, we won't have them open. Um. And then I, I'm almost done, and then I'm gonna, you know, take your questions and then um, Steve will have more on graduation. So the middle school is planning a virtual eighth grade celebration, and they always have a big outdoor eighth grade celebration. Uh, public gatherings are still prohibited, so. They will do a, planning a virtual uh, eighth grade celebration, and when those plans are final. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Payne will be sharing with all, including the board. Um, Principal Nixon, as I said, will address the graduation in his report. But we did s- receive, and this is what I wanna speak to him, end of year gathering and um. Graduation directive from the Agency of Education, last week it came out on May eighteenth. And um, there are some things that, you know, we, it, it. Schools with large numbers of graduates, it's a virtual ceremony or other means of recognizing students to reduce the likelihood of gatherings. We're still, any type of gathering is still restricted to. Uh, at, at ten students at this time. Now, there's some speculation that they may. Change that number, but it's high even to twenty-five by the time graduation actually happens. But right now, we've been instructed, the group gathering is limited to ten people or less with careful physical distancing and hygiene requirements. And um. And they've also given us guidelines on what a um. Of, uh, a drive-up graduation could look like, including that, you know. All cars have to be six feet apart, so I, I guess it's not that the car could get contagious, but if you got. Two people side by side and windows are open, then the sent, you know, at, at first, when you read it, when, you know, all cars must be six feet. Apart, it seems like, oh, cars can't catch the virus, but. Attend, attendees, including parents and families and guests, must remain in the cars, this is on, this is from the wrong Agency of Education. Graduates may one at a time leave the vehicle in order to pick up a diploma. The students should wear a mask. Diplomas need to be in bags, and there should be no physical contact, handshakes, hugs, et cetera, between students and the platform party. Staff conducting the ceremony should be kept to a minimum number possible, and that these individuals should wear masks. And observe the six four dis- the six foot distance at all times. It is permissible to have a staff member taking a photo or video. Uh, graduates may not line up or otherwise congregate, even if distancing, students are not picking, uh. Students not picking up a to- a diploma should remain in cars. So that's a, that's an overview of the directive we have received, and it is labeled directive. Uh, from the uh, Agency of Education and Governor Scott. So. That concluding, concludes what I have to say, but any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Jim, I, I have one. Is the, is the C D C also going through these exercises?
Yes, and thank you for mentioning that. I have asked the C D C. To send two representatives to the committee that's planning for the opening of school. I asked um, Superintendent Mike Lawla to. Uh, give me two administrators in the C D C so that they will be part of that discussion with the high school and middle school, because they're so commingled.
Okay, and, and with it.
You, you haven't discussed um, sports for next year.
That's right, I haven't. Um, if, if we're back to school, um. I mean, there's, there's a lot of speculation, you know, and we know that spring school was, was canceled in a two-tier step. If we're, if we continue remote learning in September, if we have direct, if we're directed that. That's the only, cause there have been comments made that like, and from the Secretary of Education, that barring um. A vaccine created by the status school, what is it, the status school will look very different. No definition of what very different looks like, so, but if we're, if we are act, if we are still in a full remote. Mode, Jackie, then I don't ima- I imagine that spring sport, uh, fall sports possibly could be delayed until. We are no longer remotely learning. If we are, if we're in some type of hybrid model of some remote and some. Um, physical learning onsite, then it would be my hope that that could, that sports could happen.
I have a question. Dave Durfee is ahead of me, but I have a question.
Okay, I see Dave, go ahead, Dave.
Good, thanks, Jim. Um, this is working fairly well, I think we should all be pleased with ourselves, it's the way the business is going. Um, and Jim, I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to connect with you earlier about this, but going back to the funding question. Uh, for ni- for next year. Uh, a- and I, I don't think this is insider information, really, but. It, there, there's really no chance.
I would love some.
Yeah, well, okay, uh, th- there's, there's no chance that we are not gonna get the money that we budgeted. The, the, the dollar amount that the voters approved for M A U will be coming to the schools, so. And I, I just don't think there should be any ambiguity out there about that. The question.
To, what does that happen to the tax rate?
Okay, so, right, that, the question then is, how will that impact, in, impact the property tax rate? And, which is, so, so that is a legitimate question. The insider information that I do have on that is that. The property tax, that, that property owners are not gonna be left holding the bag on this, so that. The state will make the revenue available from another source. Nobody is prepared to say what that source is, and I think that. The, uh, the, the hope is that it'll ultimately come from the federal government. But in any case, uh, the, the, we, I mean, I think you're doing the right thing fiscally by looking at ways that we could. Cut expenses, because it isn't entirely clear that some of that hole in the Ed Fund won't be made up by a higher tax rate. And we can, so we can impact that uh, locally, if, you know, if we decide that we wanna make changes. And, and also just say that, that the governor, the administration was floating the idea of asking school districts to revote their budgets. And that was uh, promptly shut down. I don't think anybody wants to do that, um, so. I'm glad you didn't even bring it up as, as a proposal, we don't, we, I assume.
Cause we may not have any budget. If you put it back for a revote, you may not get a budget.
So, so anyway, tha- that's all I wanted to say was that, that. Un- unless, un- un- unless we were to revote it, we will be getting money that's in the budget.
Uh, Leon and then Ed.
Question deals with the fact that, uh, there are some companies in terms of insurance, companies and different things. Uh, giving rebates back. Uh, to individuals and so forth because of uh, them not using or taking advantage of. Of all the opportunities that was agreed upon. And my question for you and Renee, is there any rumors about. The, all the insurance and things that we pay for our employees for coverage and so forth along that line? Is any of that going to be a reduction coming back to us?
I'll, I'll, I have not heard of any of that, but if Renee wants to comment, you there, Renee?
Yeah, um, I'm, Leon, I'm not sure if you're talking about health insurance or our other coverages, but um. Definitely with our other coverages, I have not heard. Um, that we should be anticipating any savings. Um, and then in terms of our, our other contracts, we're actually still using most of the services that we have contracted currently. Um, so we're continuing to pay those contractors and those vendors.
Okay.
My question was, and Steve Nixon might have a better handle on it. But has the A O E issued any, any information on how we should be grading? Classes that are now handled remotely?
Yes, we, all our teachers have that guidance, grading guidance, it's all, was all, it was all outlined in the uh. In our continuity of learning plan, we had to submit in the learning plan how grading would be handled. And uh, one, one thing I did not mention, my financial im- i- i- impact is um. Um. What happens with contract negotiations with the Teachers Association and the sports staff um. Uh, association, we have um. We know what a settlement will be and what the impact of any raise if granted or step if granted would, would be on um. Uh, on spending. Can I answer any other question? Jackie?
Uh, students who are not doing well and uh, students who need to take classes over. Will they be going to the tutorial center this summer?
Um. Summer learning, there is no, right now, there is no summer school being allowed, and that's comes from the state, so. Uh, no summer camps, we still don't have permission, uh, clearance to let our buildings be used yet. Um, let me double check that, I wanna. Um, yeah, so our school facilities for camps, um. Right now is limited, but that, what we're being told that, you know, um. We expect, this is the quote from the state, we expect the time will come when school facilities could be utilized during the summer. For educational or community activities. So as we enter summer, the answer is no, none of our buildings can be used. But it, these are all things that, you know, uh. I guess the, the, one thing I should say, how I view this is, no student should be harmed by this. They didn't ask for this. Um, we're asking to do the best they can, and the grading is uh, more credit, no credit, it's not. It, it's not a, uh, after uh, the eighteenth of, of um. March when we went into this, so that's, that's kind of the general guideline on that, and you know. May there, may there, might there be a few that skate through? Yeah, there might be, but there are also others who are really struggling and working hard, many, many with this challenge and uh. By the, the theme that we're using is to do no harm, this was not. Uh, the students um, doing to be in this position, so we're working the best with them that we can.
But we do have a contract though with the tutorial center, so is that contract ongoing or is it finished?
Um, I would s- I would term it suspended at this point right now, cause there, I, I, I'm not. I, I don't feel comfortable answering right now, Jackie, and what the tutorial centers uh, summer plans are, I don't, I don't have enough information, but I know that. If we do any summer operation, it will remain remote, so I don't know about the ver- but the, what the uh, tutorial center's doing.
Are there any, any other questions for Jim? Well, Jim, we're all very appreciative of the work, again, that you and your team have done, I know it's been a stressful time and. We appreciate you keeping us informed.
I had a question to him, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She had her hand up.
Sorry, he couldn't see me. Um, I don't know if you have an answer for this, Jim, I just wanted to say that um, parents have asked me about. Um, the possibility of opening up in the fall, and if they, as families, um, the parents or the kids are both. Don't feel safe going back to school, are, are, you know, is the school system gonna work with those families and how? Are we thinking about that?
Yeah, absolutely, that is part of our plans, you know, there particularly are uh, medically fragile students who may feel that. Uh, it's not safe for them to re- return to school. Uh, I, I think remote learning will remain an option. Uh, for some time to come for those who uh, don't either have a documented medical reason that they can't return. Um, you know, so they, the. Yeah, I, I think that, that. Yeah, I I think that 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 option is going to remain there until the day the day comes that everybody feels safe.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll we'll move on then, I assume there are no uh questions, am I right, Jim?
I don't see any hands up, no.
Okay, thank you, uh we can move on then, the next we have uh Steve Nixon's report. Who they are, is he, he's not there, what's happening?
Oh, he's here, I can see him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh good evening, nice to see you again, even under these circumstances. Uh I figured I would give you an overview of graduation, uh graduation has become sort of a moving target. Uh as as quickly as we plan things, different guidance is given along the way and. Directives and we have to keep shifting. And so we've changed plans several times and based on the last directive that. Uh the superintendent just mentioned earlier, which we received from the A O E on Monday. We have changed plans one more time and. We're gonna follow the directive, uh we didn't think doing a graduation virtually would would work. We have two hundred and three students, um it's it's really difficult to to manage that and to make it effective. So we've settled on the uh the director from the state, which is the. The drive-by graduation, now we have a graduation committee meeting on Friday morning, so. As of now, this is what the tentative plan is, it will be finalized on Friday, at which point, when that meeting is concluded. Uh the graduation information will be sent out to parents. Um so I can only give you what we know or what's part of the plan until some some of these things have to actually be. Tested uh to make sure they work and to see how effective they are and along the way we might find that adjusting things works better, so. We need to take what we have now with a grain of salt, I guess, for the time being. So as of now, the plan is on the C D C parking lot. Senior parking lot side of our building of lining up cars. Uh with parents and students, uh the first car uh facing onto Park Street. And then the cars lined up behind that car, snaking through the two parking lots and then eventually curving around the back of the building. Uh there will be staff and police on hand to make sure that this line stays in order. And that everyone knows when they are supposed to move to meet the guideline. When the time comes for a car to leave, they will pull out onto Park Street, make a left. And then enter the circle drive in front of the high school against the traffic pattern. So if any of you have come to the school, you know how you enter the circle and you leave by the, on the C D C building side. It would be the opposite, you would come into the circle from the C D C building side, pull halfway to the circle and as you know, on the interior. Portion of the circle, there is a grassy area and there we would have a canopy and a tent set up with a platform. Uh and following the state directives, the students would leave the car, the student would leave the car. Uh we would announce their name over the P A. Uh we were not able to have awards night, so we are incorporating the awards into the graduation ceremony. So when the student's name is read out, all of the scholarships and awards that they receive would also be read out at that time. We are all also having our secretary's work on doing a slideshow on our homepage. Where on the left-hand side of the page would be a picture of the student and on the right-hand page would be. Wooded list of all the awards or scholarships that they had won, so that those students could be recognized. Then after the student receives the diploma, they would then exit the area, go back into their car. And then they would drive away and then they would group and pull up and we would just repeat that. Until every student had gone through. Uh in addition to that, the school has also purchased uh yard signs for every student, every senior. Which uh basically states congratulations two thousand and twenty and a M A U H S graduate lives here. And that they would put those on the lawn in front of their home. Uh we are also, uh one of the uh, one of the people on the the graduation committee. Uh has worked with the town of Bennington, uh and we are going to purchase six banners. Uh commemorating the uh class of two thousand and twenty. And we hung uh as the banners are on Main Street currently, they will be hung at four corners. And two banners will be hung in front of the high school, there is a parent group who normally runs the all-night party for graduation. They are purchasing additional banners to place in various sites wherever they decide to do that. Um right now, the target date is June fourth and fifth. Uh we will send home letters giving specific times, dates and times to parents, again, after this is formalized on Friday. On a time, on a timetable, students and their parents will come to the high school. At which point they will pick up their cap and gown, uh because it. It's quite obvious from talking to the parents and the students, they wanna make sure they have their cap and gown early so they can iron them and the students can take their caps, which is a tradition. And they will put their yearbook and anything else that uh they may have purchased for the graduation at that point. And as of now, uh the time isn't one hundred percent sure because we. Have to go over to the school, get in the car, go through the process, time it, multiply it by two hundred and three. And sort of get a rough idea of how long it's gonna take this process to work. Assuming it works within a two-hour timeframe, we would do the standard six to eight o'clock graduation on June twelfth, which is the the day that was. Originally intended for graduation day. If we find that we don't believe we can do it within the two hours, we will move the time up, not not move it forward. Because uh we obviously can't do it in the dark. And um so basically, I think that most of it, I don't. Think I've forgotten anything, but that's that's the structure of how we're doing it now, now, I understand, I I have to. As a side note, I have to say, everyone involved is feels terribly for these kids. Uh as as Jim mentioned before, they they didn't, they didn't sign up for this. And it's not gonna be perfect by any means, but. It's what we have within the structure that we have and we have a lot of people working very hard. And giving everything to make sure it's the best that we can do within the tight guidelines that we have to do it. Um unfortunately. Children have to come onto the platform based on state guidelines with a mask on. The whole purpose of doing the drive-by is to let them through in their car and take pictures, so. Uh that makes it problematic, uh we have to put the diplomas in plastic bags, we have to wear gloves. Um we will not be able to do speeches live, uh because there won't be an audience. So what we will do is the students who were giving speeches, we will videotape the speeches and uh we will see if. Cat T V uh put those on television and we would also have them on the website for for people to view. So again, uh it's not the perfect scenario, we're aware of that. I I I know there's a lot of comments in the communities and a lot of people have ideas and. You know, we're thankful that they that they care about the graduation and they care about the kids. But it needs to be recognized that a lot of these decisions are not the school's decisions, as Jim said before, they were handed down to us. Through directives, through social distancing, all all things like that, so. Given that situation, we, this is the best that we can do in this in this situation. So if uh you have any questions about graduation, I'd gladly answer them, I think Leon, you were first.
Uh yes, I.
We lost your video.
You're muted, Leon.
I wanted to know what the role of the board were gonna be in the modification for the graduation. As normally, we normally be the one to give out the diploma, so. Uh I know you mentioned a slate of individuals gonna be there, just didn't know whether the board was still gonna be included of somebody. From the board.
That that's something we're gonna discuss on Friday because of the the social distancing, I mean, I believe the state. Did actually address, you know, to keep the number of people on the. I I don't know what word they used, whether it was stage or bandstand or something like that, but to keep the people on that to a a bare minimum. So I know um I was planning on being there. And the other administrators from the high school would not be, I mean, they would be taking part in the in the process in some form, but they would not be on the actual. Stage where uh where the student comes up.
I can answer that, Steve, what what it says is staff conducting the ceremony should be kept to the minimum number possible. And those individuals need to wear masks and observe the six-foot distance at all time is permissible to have staff members taking videos. When I read that, and I don't know what Steve's plan is, that no one's handing anybody anything, that. The diploma is in a bag and would probably be on a table that the student picks up. And take so that no one is actually doing a hand transfer, I don't know if Steve, if that's what you're thinking or not.
It does stipulate, there there can't be any handoffs, there can't be any handshakes, there can't be any hugs. So uh that situation is a little bit different, um. So once we have this discussion on Friday, if it, in in fact, you know, we have a table and we have the the bags with the diplomas in them and the student comes up and picks them up. Or whatever, we will, we will contact you and.
Right, it says no physical contact, diplomas in bags.
Right. Yeah, so whatever role you'd wanna play, we could incorporate that within the guidelines.
I mean, what could happen is, you know, Steve, you're still gonna put produce a video of all of this together, is that correct, or piece pieces of it? So that's that same video, you, if we're in reco- if we're recording, um. Uh the student speakers, maybe we could um do a a recording of uh board members too as a message to graduates.
That would definitely be an option, uh you know, I think that's something that maybe, you know, you should discuss among yourselves of how you would like to be represented. And let us know and we'll work that into the procedure.
As you create the list of awards that students have earned over their time. Could you include the the s- the C D C awards that students have earned? Because they don't have an awards night either this year.
I would, I I guess that's possible, I can't, that's not done by me, but I can pass that on to the people who do the awards. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion, I think that if we're reading out it, if we can somehow somehow co-mingle. Uh at least for, you know, for our Mount Anthony students, if they are getting some type of recognition from the C D C, if that could be read off at the same time that we're reading what they did. At Mount Anthony, yeah, that would be, I think that would be a good touch to add. Jackie?
I know that uh the C D C is recording uh the awards. And putting it in a uh video, so you could add that to your your video.
We, well, um Steve and I will make sure that we connect with uh Mike Lawler and see if there's some type of coordination, but. If they are already recording and doing their own thing, I might change my statement about reading it, cause as Steve said, one of our critical things here is time. How long is it gonna take to process two hundred and five students through this, so if if it if reading those. Adds a significant amount to the time and I really don't know how long it would, we may have to say, all right, well, they're they're doing their recognition. Cause let's remember, we're not, you know. The C D C students are all, not all from Mount Anthony, but. But we'll have that conversation.
Thank you, anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Look, Steve, uh are you gonna go on? Good, thank you.
Uh I was asked to give an overview of the alternative program and where it stands. So um. And for those of you who weren't on the board at the time, I apologize, you may not have any idea what I'm talking about, but. Uh well, if you need us to get information to you, uh to fill you in on this, we, I can gladly do that for you. But uh after showing you the design of the program earlier this year, we then went about staffing the program. And we currently have three excellent veteran teachers in the program. We have, uh matter of fact, three of our head teachers uh volunteered to go into the program. Uh so we have Chris Hansen, who is the head teacher of the English department, will be the English teacher in the program. Katie Schonbeck, uh the one of the math head teachers will be the math teacher in the program. And Allison Brigham, who is our currently our science head teacher, will be the science teacher and the head teacher in the program. Uh when school was still working normally. Uh the group had met several times, I had met with them several times to discuss the program, we worked on curriculum. Uh they were designing the operation of the community uh involvement and hands-on learning, field trips. Uh they they were working along the whole, the whole climate and feel of what the program was supposed to represent and. They have done a a large amount of hard work and they are. Three people who are totally simpatico and and working together and having the same ideas and that that's extremely helpful with the program. Cause it's all about the mindset. Um we've also brought uh Alyssa Del Tufo from Bennington College on board. And uh she is working in partnership with the program and she's bringing students over from Bennington College. And they are working on uh social justice and restorative circles within the practice, uh so we've met with her a few times. Uh the person who was slated to be the history teacher within the program. Uh resigned from the district, took another position out of out of the school system. Uh I I, to be honest with you, all of these days have been a blur to me, so I couldn't really tell you if the. If this happened right before the shutdown or at the beginning of the shutdown, but that's when that happened and that position still needs to be filled. Uh at this point in time, in in the original plan that I had presented to you, we had hoped to be closer to a final product. However, the pandemic has brought much of the work that we have to do, especially the in-person work to to a halt. Our goal at this point is to eventually begin the planning procedure, work on the space updating. And begin to have parent and student meetings, which we can't necessar- we have to do some of these things in person and they can't be done remotely. So however, at this point, we're cons- we are not really sure what education is gonna look like in the fall. So we, it may be in remote learning at that point, so that plays a large part in this. And also pending the budget discussions, that has an impact on all this also, so. Uh unfortunately, we have had to come to a sort of a standstill because of the pandemic, but we. And now we have to move ahead cautiously depending on those those two points that I brought up. But we are very confident that when we do move forward once again, that the program will be extremely successful and will meet all of our expectations. Um the one thing that will probably change if this continues, and again, I'm only speaking as we sit here right now with the major assumption that. In August, we return to school and all is normal, that doesn't necessarily look like it's gonna be the case, but if it is. Uh then we're going back to finishing up the planning and we're looking at getting everything finished, having those parent meetings and beginning. Uh program at the start of the second semester. If uh if the the distance learning continues. Then we're gonna have to reevaluate that and see what works best to to how to move forward with the program. So that's that's where we stand with the alternative program.
Thank you very much, are there any questions of Steve on so on that or graduation that have come to mind?
One, Becky Kelly.
Jackie?
Yes, uh my question is, has some kind of an analysis been done on. The students who would normally be in this alternative program and how they're doing right now with remote learning?
No, we don't, we do not, at this point, we don't have any data whatsoever on remote learning, that's something that as it begins to wind down. Uh we have to look at and we have to look at for a variety of reasons. Um there there's some anecdotal evidence, uh there's there's teachers who'll say there's students who may not have participated in class and didn't do much work. And now distance learning, they're more active, uh there's students who were the opposite, um but right now, we. To be honest with you, it's it's extremely hectic hectic on a regular basis to get this done, so we haven't had the time to start collecting data. To look at what, you know, what we did well, what we can do better and to fix things that knock on wood, we ever had to do this again.
Are there any other questions for Steve? If not, Steve, I just on the behalf of the board, I'd like to express our our thanks to you and your staff, I know that this is a. A new situation for them and it must be extremely difficult to to change gears and start to. Uh dispense the knowledge and bring those kids along through through the medium that they were using. Uh dispense the knowledge and bring those kids along through, through the medium that they were using now. And I'm sure it takes a great deal of work and patience, but well, those few people that I have talked to. It um, it seems to be going as well as it can be and, and we are very thankful for that, so thank you.
I think it's extremely important that we recognize the hard work and effort that everyone has put into this, especially the teachers. This, this is something that was dropped on them in a very short amount of time. Uh some of them had never done anything like this before and then they were told, this is what you have to do and go out and do it, and. You wonder how that's going to turn out and one thing that the administrative team does is we drop into the virtual classrooms. On a regular basis, uh and it is quite impressive, some of the, some of the things that are done and the amount of work and time. And the mindset that you have going into this is one thing, the reality of it, after you do it. I, I, I would never have realized at all that Zoom meetings take a lot more out of you than real in per- uh in-person meetings. I'm, I'm not sure, there's probably some psychological reason for that, I don't know what it is, but it, it does.
For me, Steve, the worst part of the Zoom meeting is I'm actually seeing my own face.
That's true, that's something that is.
You know, at a regular, I don't see what I look like and now I'm looking at, oh my god.
And when you talk, you have twenty people staring back at you, so. But it, it is a whole different animal and for them to adapt that quickly. It, it's, is it perfect? No, but what they're doing with the short amount of time and the skill set that they had to learn is, it, it, it is borderline phenomenal. So you're right, Tim, they definitely deserve their things.
Thank you very much, if there are no other questions.
Ed Luterno has his hand up, Tim.
Ed?
You're muted, Ed.
Could I get a copy of this continuity of education plan that?
It, it's on our website, um, Ed, on our website.
Okay, I'll look for it, thank you.
If you can't find it, email me.
Very good, are there any, excuse me, are there any other question? If not, we'll move up, we'll move on, as uh Jim had mentioned earlier, Tim Payne is, is not with us tonight, um. He didn't think it was that important that he joined us, on the chair's report, I'd just like to say that I.
Let's be clear, he didn't say that he doesn't think it's that important for, to join us, no.
I phrased it poorly.
Right, yeah.
Okay, um uh in the chair's report, um I have been in contact with Mike Malloy. Who was the chair of the committee looking into Spinelli Field and uh. The committee and the administration feel that that project should be put on pause, in other words, it's not gonna be dis-. That group will not be disbanded, but they will no longer meet until such time as we are more confident. About the, the final outcome of, of this, so that group will, will not be meeting and, and uh. We will wait uh the opening of that group's meetings uh until we are satisfied that these other situations. Have been uh satisfied. Uh I don't really know and I'll be in contact with, with Jim and other people about when the board will meet again. And as a couple of, as Leon I think mentioned, uh as to the responsibility of the board during the graduation program. Uh other than that, I have no other comments.
So I'm, I'm getting, uh I'm getting an email right now from Amy Dobson that I want to know if the meeting was still on, could I let her in, um. She thought the meeting was still at seven o'clock, so that's what happened, so.
I did send out notices at six, well, I'm sorry, Amy.
Yeah.
I didn't know if she was there or not.
Yeah, I, well, she may be watching, she may be watching at home, she's not in the meeting, I just read an email from her. That she sent me at seven oh eight, so that would have been almost ten minutes ago, yeah.
Okay, well, we, we missed her and, and I hope that she was able to pick up particularly the business concerning the alternative program that Steve. I thought explained very, very well. Uh I would like to, to thank Ron and those people that uh were able to produce letters that went out to. People that the board in earlier meetings had designated we should send letters to. Other than that, I have no other business to bring before this board, does anybody have any other business to bring before this board? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, this is Mr. Kenny.
Very good, all those in favors?
Leon has a, Leon has a question, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh just to follow up with Renee in terms of everybody following the, the signing the documents. After we got done with the meeting and we need to go and sign those.
So I sent the DocuSign warrant out um earlier this afternoon, so because the consent agenda was approved by the board. Everybody can go into that document now and apply their signature.
Thank you.
Very, very good.
Very easy process, don't stress on it.
We'll, we'll make, we'll make an attempt, that's for sure. Are there any other uh questions or concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye again.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, thank you all very much, we'll be in touch.